We'll call the October 11, 2022 Pleasant Ridge City Commission Meeting to order. We have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call?
Mr. Budden? Mr. Lenko?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Commissioner's here?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Just sending out a quick happy coming out day to everyone today. It's that day on 2022. If you are making that journey in your life, I can't imagine a better city to do it in. It's full of people that will be here to support you through your journey, and I did it 31 years ago. My mom and I can now compare guys with each other at a restaurant. It's very creepy, I tell you. It's very creepy. But it can be done. So if you're out there and you're doing that, feel free to reach out. We're here for you. And with that, I think we'll move on to the beautification awards.
Settle in. This will be about an hour and a half. Not really. Good evening. My name is Don Daniels, and on behalf of the beautification committee, I'm delighted to oversee this evening's recognition, and I join with them to celebrate these homeowners and their accomplishments with the fine work on the exterior of their homes. Sorry. Before I get to the presentation, it's important for me to acknowledge with gratitude the work of the beautification committee, whose members include Amy Bowring, Jennifer Cuber, Cheryl Laidlaw, Norman Melton, Jan Troyder, and Amanda Wall. It's also important to thank Tom Troyder, who provided us with his beautiful professional photography skills, which enhances this evening's presentation. The committee also wishes to thank Amy, Allison, Kirsten Emsley, and City Manager Jim Brookman for all of their extra effort. A couple of years ago, I recommended jokingly that the recipients were going to have their water bill waived because of Jim. So it's probably not smart for me to recommend that Jim said that they don't have to pay property taxes this year. Nonetheless, anyways, moving on, the role of this committee is to discern and select Pleasant Ridge homeowners who have invested their time and talents to enhance the aesthetics of their home. As you can see, the city is divided... Oh, sorry. There we go. Yep. The city is divided into seven zones, and each committee member selects two potential recipients. The committee then reconvenes and whittles that list down to the final recipients. Each of these recipients will receive a beautiful Marcia Hovland-designed tile, commissioned especially for this recognition. They will also receive signage acknowledging this achievement, and it's already out in their yards. So now to the recognition. Seven Oakland Park, Kristen and Stephen Kears. As many of us witnessed, this stately home at Seven Oakland Park Boulevard was rescued from too many years of inadequate maintenance. Its extensive renovation attracted a young family that is now putting its own identity to the property. Shortly after moving in, three giant pines and a crooked maple, very crooked by the way, were removed from the front lawn, and the area was sodded. A new cut-stone walk was extended across the length of the home and now connects to the driveway. Brick pillars were added on either side of the walkway, displaying abundantly-planted decorative urns. Two tall pillars on each side of the home hold up colonial-style lanterns. Landscaping plans include hosta, PG hydrangeas, caramel-colored hoichera? And dogwoods at the front corners of the home. Attractive landscaping lighting provides a perfect accent to this beautiful home. Since this home was selected, the lime wash was added, and the homeowner tells us new shutters will be added, and other plans are on the drawing board. Although our focus with these awards is on what can be seen from the curb, a huge amount of effort has been put into the somewhat wild rear yard that now has been transformed into a beautiful playground for the Kears' three young children, as well as a relaxing space for Mom and Dad. Homeowner comments, if there is? If you'd like to say a word or two?
I think Benjamin wants to say something.
I love it.
It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for the award.
Alex, do you want to say something?
Alex, do you want to accept the word for the family?
Did you want to say something?
Want to say anything?
Thank you for giving this us gifts.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Don't leave.
Sorry, because we're going to get a picture with it. Okay. The next slide. 63 Maywood, Susie Sherman Hall and George Hall. The vibrant gardens that flank the front walk are the first thing that catch your eye with this charming home on Maywood. In fact, perennial gardens surrounding the front of the home create a warm cottage-style charm that perfectly complements the home's soft green earth-tone color palette. Dramatic planters greet you on the front porch and welcoming you to another focal point, the decorative glass front door. Susie Sherman Hall and George Hall have owned this home since 2000 and have managed extensive, and I mean extensive, infrastructure and garden renovations during this time. Susie is a master gardener and has a master composter certification, all of which has guided the renovations to the yard. The ultimate long-range goal was for a cottage garden look for the property to make the house a focal point in front with a variety of seasonal color, native plants, and sustainable landscape with compost and mulches. This care and upkeep of this home make it a true standout in Pleasant Ridge.
I was just going to say, thank you very much. I think when you move to someplace like Pleasant Ridge, you adopt the sort of philosophy that my friends Jean Herron and Jeff Husby, Dog Park Friends, who I think also won an award a few years ago.
Last year.
That it's called old house living, and you sort of become, you realize that you're the next caretaker for the property, and that there's a responsibility to keep sort of the style and the structure, but add to it and, you know, whatever trees were there. I've lost a couple trees to disease or girdling roots, which is not something anyone should experience. But I worked with that and then changed the landscape as that happened. So I think that it's just become really sort of a life sort of process to see what happens next and, you know, enjoy it even though it's taking a really long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eight Kemberton, Danielle and Cory Truesdale. The Truesdales purchased their home in 2014 and have managed extensive renovation projects, both on the interior and exterior. They were gracious enough to have their home featured on a previous Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission Home Tour. Crisp white trim set against soft gray stucco highlights the architecture of Eight Kemberton. Long window boxes are filled with flowing annuals. They are stained chocolate brown to coordinate with the front door and windows under the covered porch. The decorative front walk leads to a broad cut-stone steps, flanked by tall chartreuse and gray pots that echo the colors of the stucco and the sweet potato vine and other plants in the window boxes. Foundation plantings include a casual collection of low perennials. Two porch chairs are poised to watch the world go by, and a tree swing adds a bit of whimsy to the front of this home. Congratulations, Danielle and Cory.
Thank you. Wish my wife could be here. She's the one that puts in all the hard work to get that done. I just support and mow lawns and stuff around there. But I've been in Pleasant Ridge for my whole life. I've grew up on Fairwood, moved over to Kemberton. I've never left PR, so it's a really important spot to me. It's really important that we keep our house up with our neighbors and try to make sure that we're not nice or on the street or anything. So I'm glad this validates that. So thank you very much for the award.
Cory, you have to accept your major award.
Eighty-one Oakdale, Richard Altair. So Richard purchased this home in 2017, and since then, he has managed an extensive overhaul of not only the exterior of this home, but also the complete interior. All-encompassing thought and preparation went into the details of this landscape design. The city was fortunate to view and enjoy the interior at one of our recent historic home tours. This home is a real Tudor-style charmer. The creamy beige stucco of the corner home is accented by a Victorian palette of slate gray and deep burgundy in the window frames. The front walk is anchored at the street end with small evergreens and low boxwood hedge, leading to broad steps flanked by pillars that hold beautifully-planted ceramic pots. A left-turn path option leads to a side porch with inviting seating, a decorative iron railing, and surface accents of slate gray stone and brick. This landscaping is a fine example of what can be achieved with a calming mixture of many textures and shades of green. It's a pleasing collection of broad hosta leaves, the small shiny foliage of the boxwood hedge, feathery dwarf conifers, and fluffy lime-green hydrangeas anchoring the large windows on either side of the porch. Congratulations to Richard Altair.
Thank you to the city and to the beautification committee. Very nice. And I also want to give credit to my landscape architect, Bob Marzoff, and as well as my contractor, Markus. I definitely could have done it myself, but without their help, so, but, thank you.
So the beautification committee, along with our entire community, hope these homeowners accept this recognition as a testament to their commitment of improving the overall aesthetic, not only of their homes, but of our entire city. Thank you for investing in this community that we all love and treasure. Congratulations. I would like to have all of the homeowners, if it's okay to come up. I did not.
You did? Oh, my gosh.
Miss Devonshire.
This is terrible. Oh, I am so sorry. I apologize. Seventeen Devonshire, Nikki and Chris Maybe. Were my slides out of order, too? Jim, you covered me. Thank you. I appreciate that. It is hard to pick the most standout feature of this charming home, and Devonshire. Is it the warm and welcoming side porch flanked by an American flag? Or is it the meticulously-maintained perennial gardens that create a charming border to the front lawn? Either way, these elements come together to make Seventeen Devonshire a unique and beautiful Pleasant Ridge home. Nikki and Chris Maybe purchased this home in 2006 and have enhanced significant aspects of the house and grounds. According to Christopher, his wife Nikki deserves all the credit. Other notable features of this home are the beautiful and plentiful windows on both the ground floor and charming second-story dormer, all featuring traditional mulleons, which highlight the home's historic character. And congratulations to you as well on my sincere apologies. Oh, my gosh, I had my notes.
So thank you to the city and for also the beautification. But I just want to say that this is, we are amateurs at this. And it's definitely a labor of love that we have completely have learned a lot, and there's so much more to learn. And my husband really deserved the credit because, you know, I just point and say, "Put things here." And then we move it several times, and then several more times. But he really is the one who's actually put in the work, so kudos to Chris.
That's only half true, actually. No, she has the artistic flair and really deserves 90% of the credit.
I do. Thank you.
I guess one more thing, our neighbor, Melissa.
Right. This is a group effort, actually, because we brought our neighbor.
Yep. She has been over there often to help lay sod and water when we're gone.
And Max would like to say something, too.
My mom and dad don't deserve all the credit. I mean, I've dug holes in the ground, planted flowers and stuff. I mean, I did something, so I get at least 2% of the work.
Your award.
Oh, yeah. And yours is her award. And actually, so if you'll plan on staying up here, and all of the homeowners come on up so we can get a picture, we'll put it on PRPR.
They'll stand up there.
You don't want to photo bomb? Okay.
We'll just stand in the background?
Yep.
I'm fine back here. Super fine back here. I don't, listen, you guys all deserve the award. I'm just a random woman in the background.
Good job. I love the whitewashing thing. That's fine. It's really cool.
The beautification. Cute.
All right.
My apologies so good.
All right, I think we'll move on to public discussion items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to say something that's not on the agenda?
I showed up late. I didn't get the agenda, so my bad. Hi, everybody. I'm County Commissioner Charlie Cavell. And I can give you an update on the county's brand-new $1 billion, $7 million budget that makes transformational investments in all sorts of things to help people have a higher quality of life here in Oakland County. Or I could talk about transit, if that's of interest. All right, I'll focus on transit.
Thank you.
All my notes are for transit, so thank goodness you didn't make me talk about the budget. Okay, so, does everyone know about transit? It's on the ballot November 8. If I could tell you, you should all vote yes. Here's a couple reasons why. First, what we have. Oakland County has this kind of bifurcated Swiss cheese transit system, and here in Pleasant Ridge, we have Smart. And so that means every four years, we have to vote yes to maintain Smart at its current rate. So then, what happens is we are able to take the bus to a handful of places that are only, and buses are only available for a certain amount of hours, and paratransit, which helps handicapped and older adults be able to get places, are extremely limited. And then every four years, we have to vote for it again. And so there's a couple of things that this new millage that's on the ballot now to vote yes on, November 8, does to change. Is first, it moves the transit millage from being a four-year thing to a 10-year thing. So that will allow us, all you local government people will understand this, that allows us to bond, so we can make structured investments using debt because people can count on the money being there. So that's important. Second, we're going to get rid of the Swiss cheese model. So this is going to be county-wide. It won't be just Smart. It'll be Smart, but also transit systems that are local to communities like Rochester Hills, or what they call Woda in western Oakland County. And so this system will then allow for people to go from Eight Mile to Flint on a bus. It will allow people to go to Apple Orchards, right? This is going to be a huge investment in a transformational program if we all vote yes. And the really cool part, because I was getting kind of in the weeds about the dollars and cents, the thing that's really cool for Pleasant Ridge is you'll get a tax break. Because we've been having Smart, we'll go from paying $1 mil to paying .95 mils. So you save a few bucks, but it's still a tax break nonetheless. I can talk to you about why, right, the social and economic implications, if you'd like, or if that's not already kind of intuitive.
Go for it.
Okay, cool. So then, the why, I mean, why this is important, there's, the social side is Oakland County is one of the fastest-aging places in Michigan. Michigan is aging faster than the state of Florida. So that means two things. One, we have a large population of baby boomers that are getting older every day, like the rest of us, but will likely need more services, and will have a harder time being able to drive at night or longer distances. So taking advantage of this opportunity now, which again will lower our taxes, to expand transit is a really good idea to start laying the groundwork for what we will need as a county for our older adults in the next 10, 20 years. Second thing, on the other end of the age spectrum, part of the reason why we're aging quickly is not because we have a disproportionate amount of baby boomers compared to any other community or state or county. It's because all the young people that can afford to leave are leaving for places without even having jobs. I'm sure some of you in here or up here, you know, know of friends, family, kids, grandkids, whatever, that left to go to Portland, or LA, or New York, or Chicago, and they didn't even have a job waiting for them, right? We all know those stories. This is one of those things that will attract talent, so there's that as an economic opportunity, too. Having a comprehensive transit system is one of the reasons, just to take as an example, not that Amazon's the best, but why Amazon said Metro Detroit is not worth investing in is because we don't invest in comprehensive public transit in a sincere way. So it's good for talent attraction. It's good for deterring brain drain. And it's also good for, from an equity perspective, because on average, they say, it costs about $8,000 a year to own a car, right? That's the insurance, that's the gas, that's just the upkeep, maybe a lease or the payment on the car. So that already then assumes that someone will have $8,000 to spend on a car, or if they don't have it, it helps suppress wages or keep people out of work longer. So those are the social and economic implications of why we ought to vote for this. And if you ever talk to someone, or you yourself are not a fan of transit, or you think, "I could totally save those $87 a year in property taxes that I give to Smart to do with something that I'd rather do with," and you're planning to vote no, if I could just say, Jim, don't listen to this because you're a city manager. But if I could just say, "You hope you never have to use the fire department, but you're more than happy that it's there even if you never use it, or call 911 for the fire department, and you're more than willing to pay for it." Public transit is a public service of that same ilk. So us paying for it is, I would think, the same sort of thing as having a fire department ready and waiting for us. It's just an essential service of a top-tier community. And if we don't vote for it, it will reaffirm to business leaders and also, from an equity perspective, that we're still arguing about whether or not we consider ourselves worthy of that investment. And I can tell everyone more about how they could help if they'd like, or would that be too politicky?
I think it would be too politicky.
Great.
I should invite everyone to go to the city website. If you've not seen your ballot, if maybe you're not voting absentee, the sample ballot's available on the website by going to the elections tab, and you'll be able to read the ballot proposal, whichever way you're voting.
And I'd be happy to talk about this, or the county budget, or anything else if people have questions or concerns about anything.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that had items that were not on the agenda? All right, and we will move on to governmental reports. Do we have any governmental reports tonight?
Yay.
Yes.
Well, good evening. I feel like I have missed you guys for the last few meetings. This week is actually Fire Prevention Week. We try to promote it for the whole month, but just to remind people, encourage you, check your smoke detectors and create a home fire escape plan. Our kids in school know exactly what to do, what the fire alarm sounds like, exactly what to do, but we miss doing that in our homes and knowing two ways out and making sure our homes are safe and everybody prepared. So my challenge to everybody is go ahead and do that. And if you want any more information on anything, we will have a tent up at Pig and Whiskey this weekend. That's going on in Ferndale, if you like that kind of thing. Or call us anytime, and we'll be happy to send you fun activities to do with your family. We have stuff we can just email to you, or we can give you hard copies. Stop into the fire station, come see us. We are not doing an open house this year. That will come back next year. However, I will be at Hazel Park's open house, and I will be in a dunk tank. What else do you do on October 23, right? We will be raising money for breast cancer, so it is for a good cause. So if you want some fun to do that day, come throw balls and dunk me in the water, and I'm hoping for a balmy, warm October day. But it is raising money for a great cause, so. Other than that, it's been really busy everywhere for fire and EMS, so just working hard to keep everybody safe. As we go into the winter, please make sure your furnaces are well-serviced. We don't want to talk about that white stuff yet, but again, just make sure your stuff's in good working order. Have carbon monoxide detectors in your home as everything's starting to be turned on so we can keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
My note taker. Good evening, everybody. Crime in Pleasant Ridge continues to stay low, thank God. Unlike other places around, who remain busy and busy and busy, the radio is constantly busy with traffic of everything. I mean, I can only attribute it to our officers, just constant patrol. I hope everybody sees the police cars driving around a lot. I hope they're engaging and waving and helpful and everything like they're supposed to be. Just a quick thing about Halloween coming up. The recommended hours for trick-or-treating are like 5:00 PM to 7:30. You can stay later if you want, but we don't recommend. It's dark, things like that. Homeowners who plan to give out candy are urged to turn on their porch lights. We encourage parents or people that are accompanying minors and small children to wear reflective material, carry flashlights, maybe where the, like, flashing lights, things like that, like the pedestrians and bicyclists wear. Safety, obviously, is our number-one priority for everybody. The homeowners, the people out trick-or-treating, as you know, we get a lot of people from not in Pleasant Ridge that come here just for the fact because it's safe. And usually, a lot of the residents give out the really giant candy bars. So I put on my trick-or-treat costume. So you may see me at your door. All the normal street crossing, safety rules apply. We do write tickets to people. We do have a lot of people that will follow their youngsters in a car down the road, and other traffic is trying to get by, and our streets are narrow, and with parking and stuff limited. We encourage people to park their car somewhere and then walk with your children so you're not blocking the road. Cover everything else. And we always have extra officers on duty on Halloween. So if you see something that seems out of the ordinary, or just doesn't seem right, whatever, or you have an issue, call, and we'll be happy to help you with the, whatever issue you have. Obviously, if you are checking your children's candy, back in the past, we used to do the metal detecting and things like that. If it's unwrapped, we're to obviously throw it away. That's just common sense. If you have, you do discover something that raises concerns, give us a call, and we'll be happy to come and take a look at it and whatever, and see if we can help you out with that. And Shawnee wanted to remind everybody that the community center will be open till what time?
Like 7:30 or 8:00.
Okay. And just for the restroom use and things like that. And then, if you have leftover Halloween candy, did you want me to talk about that? Nope, you can. Nope, I'll leave it for you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any other governmental reports?
Do you just want me to give? Normally, Chris gives it. Do you want me to go?
Sure.
Oh, so I'll just go ahead and give a couple reports, too. Shawnee from the Rec Center. Hi, it's nice to see everybody tonight, full house. Couple things upcoming, the deadline to submit, if you decorate your house for Halloween, we have a couple different categories. The Rec Commission does vote on that. Submit that to Greg by October 21. Just to follow up on the candy donation, if that's something that people are willing and would like to do, please donate it to the community center by noon on the 4th of November. Jay Foreman is going to kind of head that up again. He always puts it on the PR page about guessing. He always puts it on the PR page, about guessing how much it weighs. Last year was over five hundred pounds that we donated to gratitude, uh, I forget the name of it, but this year we are working with Treats for the Troops, which is sponsored by Oakland County Sheriff's Department. So, that's new this year, but Greg and I will be taking it up to Oakland County on that Friday afternoon, so. And then we do have a couple other things coming up. We do have Fifty Plus Club Bingo, and a few different day trips coming up to One Eye Jack's and the Parade Company. We are also offering flu shots, panonia, that's what I call it to my kids, pneumonia and shingles. Sorry about that. On Thursday, um, this Thursday, October 13th, 1 to 5:45, it's preferred if you can make, if you could pre-register for that. If not, you can drop in always, just bring your picture ID and your insurance card. CBS from Oak Park will be on-site doing those. Group exercise classes are being held at the Rec Center always, they're always ongoing. You can drop in. Uh, Zumba's free to anybody for the first time. So, if anybody's interested in that, she's extended that offer to just get more people involved and get people up and moving. And then coats for the cold, we're partnering with Oakland County Sheriff's Department for that again. Donation boxes will be here at the community center and here at City Hall, um, November 1st through November 25th. So, it's a busy, busy month.
Nice.
And I'd also like to think, I don't, I think Don left, but Don and Robert and Spriler, so many people for the Fall Fest. We had uh, record-breaking numbers for that. I, I wouldn't even know where to guess, I would maybe five or six hundred people for that. But Mother Nature helped, it was a beautiful day for that. So, we had lots of people. I know they went through, I think, a thousand donuts and ran out of every cup they had and bought a hundred and fifty more and ran out of that too. So, thank everybody for that and for coming out, so thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Shawnee.
Shawnee, that was a fun day.
Yeah, it was a really fun day, so thank you.
All right, I think we'll move on to uh, Commissioner Liaison reports. Commissioner Perry? Oh, do we have another? No, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the Planning Commission and DDA will be meeting on Monday, October 24th, right here at City Hall at 7 o'clock. The Planning Commission will be holding public hearings for a proposed zoning ordinance amendment and a special land use request to allow a dentist office in the former Romano Law Building on the southeast corner of Woodward and Sylvan. Um, the medical offices require special land, uh, land use approvals by the Planning Commission, so they'll be discussing that. Um, also, the zoning ordinance amendments, amendment includes an adjustment to the setback requirements along Woodward, reducing the front setback requirement from ten feet to three feet. This is in keeping with the current building patterns along Woodward, and allows for more space in the rear for parking and dumpsters and other uh, needs that businesses have. It also includes, um, the public hearing includes an access management standards um, to prohibit new driveway access onto Woodward from private property, along with prohibition on drive-through uses. This takes the cycle track installation along Woodward into consideration to help reduce the number of conflict points. Um, Woodward properties have access to the alleys that can provide motor vehicle access, so the alleys really serve as that, those access points. Um, the addition of a minimum open space requirement in single and two-family residential district, um, this is to retain open space of gardens and grass versus someone paving their whole yard. Um, the zoning ordinance amendments will be brought to the City Commission for approval, if passed by the Planning Commission. Um, also, I have a quick little Woodward Heights update. I think a lot of people, I know the commission was there. The um, Tool Design hosted the second traffic management meeting via Zoom on September 27th. They presented several options for helping manage vehicle traffic on Woodward Heights. They also presented traffic analysis to the, um, to estimate the impact of Woodward Heights operational changes on other streets. There were breakout rooms where Woodward Heights residents and other neighbors were able to get, to weigh in on what sort of their preferences were of some of the different options, and they discussed, you know, why they preferred those options and sort of what, you know, brought up lots of questions. You know, it was, the breakout rooms I thought were really great because people, you know, really had a chance to sort of present their perspectives and, you know, to ask a lot of questions and everything, and their tool design had facilitators in each group. Uh, the meeting video and presentation are available for everyone to view on the city website at cityofpleasantridge.org/woodwardheights. Then Tool Design will be bringing their final recommendations back to the City Commission in November for our consideration, so watch for that in November. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, it's uh, pretty amazing what Tool Design has put together for us so far. Um, I, I'm very comfortable that they've gotten quite a bit of feedback from all down Woodward Heights, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll see what, where we land in November.
Well, I thought that was, the breakout rooms were really interesting because you saw different, you know, like mine had at least four households from Woodward Heights represented, and um, like five residents and, you know, varying viewpoints, and so it was a really good, it was a good mix.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schmier for the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple things. Number one, this Saturday, 10 till 12, the museum will be open, so as always, stop by, check out your folder, add to your folder if you have any pictures or anything, or any new information about your house, add it to your folder for the future generations to see. Um, September 23rd, 2023 is going to be our home tour. So far, we have two houses committed, which is awesome, but we are looking for at least five more, or more than that. But you, we definitely want to have at least five, or seven total. So, um, if you are interested, if you are thinking you might be interested, definitely reach out, and we can have a conversation. Um, and then lastly, ornaments, your Pleasant Ridge ornaments. As always, you can buy it at City Hall in the museum. We will also be um, outside on Election Day too. So, if you want, when you're voting, we will be there. Cash only there, but at the City Hall, you can use credit cards or checks. Credit cards or checks, right? I wonder, anyway, yes, credit cards or checks. I just got confused on that, and that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Budnik isn't here tonight. Uh, Commissioner Lenko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
About schools.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Um, so homecoming was a hit. The next uh, school board meeting is coming Monday. Um, really, as far as updates go, uh, the major one is Ferndale is looking uh, to get out of their lease in the Kulik Center, uh, and transfer that back over to the school, which will be used for, for flex space. Um, but yeah, those are kind of the main updates, and give it back.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Any comments? All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, well, we'll move on to the discussion around 24 Cambridge and the proposed last flip. Jim?
Thank you. Um, I'll give a brief overview. This was before the commission last month, um, for anyone tuning in for the first time. What we have is a request by the property owner at 24 Cambridge. Somehow I jumped to the end, I don't know. Uh, to split off a portion of a platted lot. Uh, 24 Cambridge consists of three parts, former Libranoy Avenue right-of-way, an outlot from the Pleasant Ridge Land Company subdivision, and then a 61-foot lot from the Pleasant Ridge Land Company subdivision. Um, the outlot is a 8.1 feet wide, um, and it was space that was left over in between that lot and the 110-foot Libranoy right-of-way. Uh, Libranoy was eventually abandoned, uh, in Pleasant Ridge and turned into a developable lot, uh, 55 feet of which is on 24 Cambridge, and then the other 55 feet is on 22 Cambridge, next door to the east. Uh, the proposal last month was to do a 50-foot lot, um, to create a new parcel A. Uh, that has been revised. Uh, in the packet, it was at 55 feet, but the property owner has subsequently uh, provided a new proposal, uh, with a 58.8-foot wide lot. And this is the maximum um, sized lot that can be created, uh, without requiring alterations to the existing house at 24 Cambridge. And the reason for that is this maintains the minimum five-yard side, uh, five-foot side yard setback, uh, on the west side of 24 Cambridge. The underlying lot 23 from the Pleasant Ridge Land Company subdivision is 61 feet wide. So, as 24 Cambridge was expanded over the years, you can see that small addition at the northwest corner of the house that was added, um, that would currently preclude creating the 61-foot wide, uh, lot 23 without alterations to 24 Cambridge. Finally of note is that the reason that this request is before the City Commission is because the proposal is to partition a platted lot into a smaller piece. Um, if it was to, if the um, request is to re-split off the entire Lot 23, the 61-foot wide lot, that doesn't require City Commission, uh, that's basically an automatic approval. Uh, all of the lots to the west in the Pleasant Ridge Land Company subdivision are 61 feet wide, uh, so that's the prevailing development pattern along the street. Uh, so you can see that the current proposal will be to create the 58.8-foot wide lot, and then the remaining 65.3-foot, uh, 24 Cambridge. So, um, that's before you, there's a number of criteria for uh, consideration by the City Commission. Uh, is the division in keeping with the character of the surrounding neighborhood? Does it enhance the future development or existing uses of the affected lands in conformity with the zoning ordinance? The zoning ordinance requires a 50-foot minimum lot width. Um, there's a wide range of platted lot widths in the city, but there's four zoning districts. So, the zoning, minimum lot width in the zoning ordinance does not um, always line up with the platted lot width that we have throughout the city. Uh, will the split have an adverse impact on the provision of municipal services? It doesn't, this is not a consideration. Um, there's no issue providing municipal services to one more house. And then, uh, is the division in the public interest? So, really, it's the character and the public interest questions, uh, that the commission should consider as you determine whether splitting the underlying platted lot into a 58.8-foot wide lot rather than the 61-foot wide platted lot is in the public interest. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have on this, or I'm at your disposal.
Okay. Uh, were there any questions that we had for Jim? Uh, maybe give up opportunity for the homeowner if you'd like to?
Yeah, Nate Meinsberg, 24 Cambridge. So, I had anticipated that there was going to be two proposals, one at the 55, and then the other one at the 58.8. So, does that mean the only option being considered is the 58.8?
Uh, that would be up to the commission. They could consider either one.
Okay.
So, when we, uh, so when a motion is made, that motion could be made at either.
Okay, understood. Yeah, just want to make sure these.
Or neither, just so to be clear.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, totally understand. Um, so what I want to do is, when we were in here a month ago, um, we had presented 50-foot lot, and I just kind of want to give some comments to this revise, what went into it, why we made the considerations we did. So, um, the first thing we wanted to do was consider the concerns that were raised by other parties at the last meeting. Um, hosts of those were Bigfoot, uh, footprint of the house, the size of the lot below the average, green space, trees, and development of the lot. So, within this, um, we've increased from 50 to 55 feet, so it's above the minimum lot size within the area. Within that, we also worked with the developer, who would subsequently uh, be developing the lot to get their assurances that as part of their development, they would develop, assuming it's a 50-foot lot, meaning they keep to a 37-foot print for the house. We have those written assurances that we sent through in an email form to the commission. Uh, the benefit to doing that is going to maximize green space, it's going to give the maximum opportunity for the trees to be preserved. And then also, on 28 Cambridge, there's arbovites that border that lot that the developer gave us assurances they would preserve. That's an intention to try to allow the privacy and the greenery that is on the edge of that lot to be preserved with the future development. And then I just want to make a few characters on, uh, or sorry, a few comments on the character of the lot, because I think that's the primary concern. Um, and when I look at the street of Cambridge, I really see three examples of lots on the street. So, the first one is the lot that was developed recently, currently in development, um, didn't have very many trees on it. Then the other lot I looked to is the one across the street that has horseshoes, that has some trees, and then I looked to our lot that has landscaping, significant number of trees, and a putting green. That tells me there's a wide variety of character that's on our street for lots. And then I looked to east of Ridge, which was established in the last meeting, a very unique area, um, that has a special character, preserver, preservation that's desired within the area. And if we look at Poplar Street, there's an example of a lot that's 70 feet in on a street where 100 is the average, so 30% below the average. It's also in a zone that's zoned to 80 feet, understanding that's due to the underlying plat, but wasn't due to a subdivision from a previous point. But that being said, it's an example of a very beautiful home, east of Ridge, 30% below the average on the street. In this case, what we're requesting is 8% below the average, and that tells me smaller platted lot with a future development could fit in with the character of the street. Third point I looked to is a future development in the lot. And if a future lot's developed on a 50-foot lot, like I said, that's the assurances we got from the developer, would it fit in with the character of the street? Um, a great example is a house for sale right now at 78 Oakdale. That is on a 50-foot lot, meets the setback requirements. If you were to pick up that house, drop it on the lot, it'd fit in perfectly with the character of the street. It's a beautiful home. And that comment is not meant to imply and draw parallels between Oakdale and the street on Cambridge, because as everyone's established, that street is very specific, but it's meant to show the development on that property would fit in very well with the street, which tells me it can keep with the character. And then the fourth point that Jim mentioned is the underlying plot, that the dwelling's on today is 55 feet. Um, so ironically enough, if these lots were flipped, um, it would be an administrative approval, and to me, that says there's a precedence of a platted lot on Cambridge that's 55 feet. So, just wanted to share those comments, um, and then the additional comment with the 58.8, um, that is meant to address if the concern of lot width is more important, green space and trees. That's why I wanted to give that option here today, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, to answer the question about the 55-foot existing lot, that's not including the 8-foot of property that's in the other.
Libranoy. Well, for one thing, that's not a platted lot, because that was abandoned right-of-way. And then, um, so you can see the two yellow lines. Though, that's the, uh, what was, uh, set aside for Libranoy right-of-way. So, there was 110-foot wide right-of-way, and then when that was abandoned, it was split in half to create two lots, and then the outlot, the 8.1, uh, out, uh, foot-wide outlot C, uh, is also in play here. So, that is the difference. That's why you have 59.92-foot wide lots at 22 and 23, because it's the 55 feet, and then the 4.92-foot wide outlots from the subdivision that's, um, to the east.
Right.
So, that's, you know, this is where, because of that former right-of-way, um, that's, you know, the, the, I guess, the difference, and why this area is just a little bit different than the rest of the street.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
May I have your heard, Mayor?
Um, yes, please.
Thank you. Eric Shabel, 28, Cambridge. I was here last time, my wife Karen is here, as well as, excuse me, a whole host of Cambridge neighbors, what I call the central corridor of Cambridge, um, who are not here in support. I will, I will save them the breath, but they should feel free to come up and, um, speak for themselves. And I know Eisensteins can't be here, I believe. Paul sent an email to one or all of you, I know John Dispro is here, sent an email, a well-written email that I was, received a copy of, sort of analyzing, uh, what we have going here today. Did we move the goalposts? I mean, that's my first question. When did this 58-foot proposal come on board? It's not part of the packet. So, are we considering that? Is that part, so we're just moving on the fly? Okay. Um, it seems like notice everybody would have been appropriate, um, on, on yet another proposal, the third proposal, when we hadn't dealt with the second one. But, you know, I have, I think the question is why, you guys, and there's three whys the way I see it. You have a request to do something that hasn't been done in 100 years, since this town, since we've been a village and almost 100 years as a city, and it's to carve up a parcel that's smaller than any other parcel. And it's to carve up a parcel that's smaller than any other parcel between Woodward and Ridge. Hasn't been done. There's been mention that another lot is 59-point-something. But there's, there's nothing that I'm aware of that that was done as part of a request to be split. I believe that was part of the livernoy corridor that was abandoned, that's what they built. There is no, and I confirmed, I mentioned last time, it was my suspicion, I confirmed, there is no lot that's smaller than 61 feet, other than the one that has been identified between Ridge and Woodward from Cambridge all the way up to Millington. There just isn't. So the request is unique in that sense. So the why is, why would we do this? Why would, why would, why would an application be made? The city code requires the applicant to put the reason why. There is no reason in the application. The application's deficient on its face. But I think we all know what the reason is, because they want to develop the lot. And so if we're going to do that, we need to understand what that looks like. And the original proposal at 50 feet would be a Bigfoot. The subsequent proposals will be a Bigfoot. The cost of the land, the what it's, apparently there's a contingent offer, combined with the cost of building anything halfway decent, is going to put this price north of a million. And somebody who's building that, who's looking to make a profit, is going to maximize every inch of that space. And that means cutting down trees, it means blowing out the landscape, it means the noise and everything that comes with that. And, you know, sitting in the back and looking at the pictures of all these beautiful homes, people who won awards, the irony shouldn't be lost on us that we're talking about yanking down trees and starting over on something that would be the exception to all of the rules in 100 years. That why doesn't get answered, I don't think. All of this could have been explored, I think importantly, before the house was purchased. Do due diligence, make a contention offer. Come and ask your neighbors, hey, we're thinking about buying this house. Or after you bought it, come ask your neighbors, this is what we want to do. That didn't occur either. So why object to the application is the second why. You know, I thought a lot about this, and as did our neighbors, and that's why they're here tonight. You know, there are exigent circumstances, special needs, other factors that may go into this, then it may be a different story, but that's not what we have here. The entire issue, in my opinion, has been self-created by the folks who bought the house, not anything outside of that or anything around what our neighbors want to do. No one adjacent to this lot is on board. In fact, Carrie Pennington is here, she lives on Oxford, behind the vacant parcel. They didn't know anything about it until we mentioned it to them. They're not on board. The folks that are here and are given their time to come talk are all longtime residents, volunteers, coached Little League, sit on commissions, sit on boards, sit on the foundation. This isn't something, again, that we take lightly. Ultimately, a Bigfoot is contrary to the neighborhood, and I don't think you saw any of those pictures of people got awards that anything looked like a Bigfoot. So the last why, I think, is why would you reject the application? I think the fact that we're moving the goalposts here for the third time shows that there are issues with the proposal. It does not, in my view, the request, and I mentioned this, but I want to mention it again last month, the request is not comport to the preamble in the building code that talks about, and I paraphrase, excuse me, the zoning ordinance, that the ordinance is there to protect the character and social and economic stability of the neighborhood by securing the most appropriate use of land, preventing overcrowding of the land, undue congestion of population, providing adequate light, air, and reasonable access. I don't think putting a house on a small lot does that, and I don't think our neighbors do either. Finally, on the why you would reject it, is if you start doing the math, we talked about sharpening our pencil, you start doing the math, once you put a garage on this new proposal at 58, at 55, at 50, you become the smallest house on the street. And there are people, the Potts, the Pontises, not as much us, but other folks who have invested significant amounts of money in renovating their homes, and to the point now that if something new and smaller and Bigfoot goes in, in our view, it devalues the remaining character and value of the homes on the street. So with those three whys, and the fact that apparently we now have a third proposal that I didn't review until I saw it on the screen, we'd ask the commission to deny the application. Thank you.
Just before you sit down, just a quick question.
Sure.
Is it, is it your concern that the lot be split at all or be split at something less than 61 feet?
I don't think it can be split at 61 feet without other issues.
It can be, that's the point.
But that's not the request?
No, they don't need to make a request to split the lot at 61 feet.
Then, then we wouldn't be here, I guess, would we? But I can't comment on something that hasn't been proposed that I'm not aware of. So if it can be split at 61 feet, then, and if you all said that would be administratively done, then I don't, I have nothing to talk about, it sounds like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Desk, please.
Hello, Eric Pot, 29 Cambridge. I can't articulate this issue any better than Mr. Scheible has. I'm only speaking as a neighbor who has a property that's directly across the street from this proposed lot. We were lucky enough to win a beautification award years ago. We've put a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, tears, and money into our property, a lot. And my concern is, I think that this is a common sense issue. I don't disparage anybody from doing whatever they want with their private property. I just think that when you have, when you are in a community that's been there for 100 years or almost 100 years, you need to develop within parameters that are commensurate to the look and feel of the neighborhood. And I think that Jim's analysis shows that the lots are, on average, on our street, 60 to 65 feet. And I think that anything less than that will encourage, as Eric Scheible mentioned, anything less than that will encourage a developer, builder, or an investor to come in and try to maximize their return, which will be to maximize the square footage on the build. And as somebody who's going to have to look across the street at whatever goes in for a lot that could potentially be 55 feet, that is deeply concerning for me, and I would be very disappointed if the commission voted yes for this. So I would encourage everybody to vote no on the 55-foot proposal.
Thank you. Desk, please.
I'm John Disborough, I'm in at 30 Cambridge. I had a couple of questions for the commission. If the homeowners have made some statements about conditions that they're placing on development, is that something that can be considered in this, in this request? Or is that, it would seem like that's something completely independent. Any assurances they have are not really something that can be considered in this action taken with regard to the width of the lot, right? So if they say that whatever's going to be built is only 37 feet wide, we just have to take their word for it? There is no real assurance there, is, is my question.
I think there's also no assurance, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, and I appreciate you getting, having the conversations, but I don't think there's also any legal assurance with the developer, other than just a handshake agreement in hopes that they follow through, but I don't think legally it's binding either.
Yeah, so I would, I would ask that that's, that that's something that you all consider, because I think that that's, that's important. And, you know, I think Eric and Eric have both said everything that I think a lot of us feel. This is a, this is a self-imposed issue. It's not, you know, it's not one that I think is really keeping anyone from using the property. I do think, though, this does set a precedent, which is potentially more of a concern in other areas of the city, where there are other homes on double lots, where if there's a precedent for splitting off a lot at less than the platted width, then that makes it easier the next time around, when a developer wants to come in and do the same thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we got everyone.
Anyone else?
I think we're at a point where we should make a motion.
Do we have to make the motion for 55, or can we make it at 58.8?
You could make it for 58.8. Or you could make it not to have it.
I mean, more than anything, I'd like to make a comment, but.
Desk, please.
Okay, so this has been really difficult for me, and I, and I think a lot of people, surprisingly, I don't know, when this first came forward, I wasn't imagining it to be such a conflicting topic. I think the first thing for me is, looking at this idea, at 61, it wouldn't even be a conversation. At 61, it's being split. And at that point, we don't control whether a new house is going, if it's going to be a Bigfoot house, if they're going to take down the trees. We lose that conversation. So the real question in front of us today is, are we going to allow it to be split less than 61? And at that point, we then have to have the conversation of characteristics and public interest. At the 58, and I will say that I take responsibility for that being a last-minute ad, because I did speak with the homeowners and did suggest putting in a larger, a larger request. So I apologize, that I think kind of stemmed from me. So the question is, character and public interest. And I do think that in terms of character of the future house, if it is going to be sold at 58.8 or 61, the character of the house most likely will be the same. Whether we feel like it fits in the street or not, it's going to be the same. So really, for me, now the question is public interest. And what I've heard from the public, especially the people on Cambridge, is that they want, that they don't want a smaller lot. So I'm conflicted, because I also like the idea of being full, too, when people come with requests, and being able to look, able to look at every request differently. So for me, the real question is, do we require the 61, or are we willing to be flexible down to 58.8? And that is really where I am, and I'm incredibly conflicted, again, over this idea of trying to be flexible and work with homeowners, or really going, you know, with the, I would say, kind of the outcry of public interest here at 61.
I will add this, though, and I've taken many bike rides down Cambridge over the last month and a half, just to see what the character of the street is. And as some of you have received in correspondence from me, most of the houses on Cambridge are filled a lot. It's a home with a driveway and a setback separating the homes from each other. In some cases, you have two driveways side by side, but most of the homes, particularly as you go further west on Cambridge, are a home and a driveway and a setback and then another home. So I suspect that whatever home goes on 26 Cambridge will likely fit that flavor. I can imagine a home that might be different, but that's, it's likely to be like many of the other homes on Cambridge, particularly as you drive west of 24 on Cambridge. That's what I see, two-story homes that generally fill the lot, and there's a setback and a driveway. So I don't know that they'll be that different than that, if whatever gets built there. I don't think the lot is actually big enough to support like a two-car garage entrance, because in my head, I'm imagining the lot has to be at least 67 feet with setback and 16 feet and everything else, and 30%. So I'm thinking the house can fit, it would, it would be fitting, and then it's just the question is, as Katie has said, what is the public's interest? Not only the interest of the owner, but the interest of the rest of the street. I don't think I would see a difference between 58.8 and 61 if I were to look at the lot. Two feet is not something that you'll notice, but I understand the concern that it sets a precedent, that others might come in and ask for something even less later, because we've done it once somewhere. Although, the number of lots in Pleasant Ridge that could be split are actually, there's a really, really small number of lots remaining that haven't already been split in some fashion. So that's the, that's the, that's what I know. But I guess we still need a motion of some kind in order to kick off further discussion and, from, from someone, and then move forward.
So, I mean, I get into the whole precedence issue. I mean, because this is the thing that we have, you know, over, you know, the years that I've been doing this, you know, precedence is always sort of something that we have to look at moving forward, because, you know, it's like, you know, 58 feet might become, you know, then 50 feet or, you know, 48 feet in different situations. I think we have one lot split that's really unbuildable. But there, so it's, I think it's a really difficult issue. You know, Nate, I appreciate what you guys have done, and, you know, how much you've been reaching out to your neighbors and really trying to hear what they, what they are saying, and appreciate your flexibility in trying to go back and, you know, to work with these guys. I think it's, I appreciate the conversation that we had. I think, you know, I've spent a lot of time debating the pros and cons, like, like as Commissioner Schmier said, this was way, it became a much bigger issue than what, you know, we thought when we really thought about the precedent of all. You know, there is a way for you to split it with, I know, from what I've heard, there's a way for you to split it with the 61-foot platted lot intact, which requires some changes to the home, and it creates some extra cost. But it does, you know, it feels like it will, it, splitting it off at the 61-foot platted lot will ensure that the, the new lot is in the character and sort of the development pattern of Cambridge. For that reason, I sort of, I'm leaning that way, because I think, you know, I think you guys will do some great work, and it'll be beautiful, but it, you know, from my perspective, I think it's really important to, you know, preserve these precedents of, you know, these lot sizes, which it's like, all of our streets have their own characters, characteristics, and it's, it is, I don't know, it's, this one has been really tough. I just want to let you know, we appreciate all the conversations. And I'm only speaking for my vote, but I'm, I really do appreciate this, and this is not something any of us have taken lightly. And we've all lost a lot of sleep and fretted quite a bit over this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Desk, please.
Just want to echo and agree completely with Ann as far as the precedent and her comment on the 61, so.
Thank you.
Just as far as the feeling goes.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yes, please. And then a motion.
Yeah, so one, one quick question is, I know the uniqueness is the minimum lot width is 50 in the zoning ordinance. Are there other lots that would even be able to be split below and meet the minimum zoning ordinance for the vacant lots that are available, or all the remaining vacant lots at the platted width, meaning they would fit with the ordinance? Just trying to understand the precedence, and if there really is a risk of precedence going forward.
Desk, please.
Okay. I can't speak exhaustively throughout the whole city, but by and large, and I've looked, by and large, what you would think of as the empty lots as you drive through Pleasant Ridge are independent, right? So you mentioned the horseshoe pit, and I think there's a house further down on Cambridge where there's an empty lot. Those are separate lots right now. They're not connected to the house next to them, even though they're owned by the abutting property owner. Those are, it's a 60, 65-foot-wide platted lot that's just vacant. So there'd be no split necessary for those. There are some lots which could be, which are combined, which could happen, but those are a little bit different than yours. As I understand it, you have an enclosed porch that's the setback issue. They would have to be modified to allow the 61-foot lot to be created. All the other houses, excuse me, that I've found and seen through the city as I looked over the map, the actual body of the house is on the combined lots. So you would have to knock down the house and then split, and then build two new houses. So there's, there's really not one that I've found that's like this one, where it's just, you know, a small, a small little setback issue from the existing house that's preventing easily creating the underlying platted lot again. So.
2.4 feet, right? 2.4 feet is what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2.2, yeah.
Okay.
2.2.
Mm-hmm.
2.2?
2.2.
Oh, 2.2.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
If only I could make a motion.
Your honor, I move the application by Nathaniel, I'm sorry, shoot, Minesburg, for the lot split of parcel number 60-25-28-278-036, commonly known as 24 Cambridge, be denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, yes, please.
We did.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Budna could not be here tonight.
Oh, that's right.
He did send a comment. He did send a comment. Would you like us?
Yes, please.
Now to read that?
Yes, please.
Before the motion? Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Now would be the time to read that.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Budna's comment is, I apologize, I'm unable to be in attendance for tonight's meeting. I still wanted to share my thoughts on the proposed lot split. Since the last commission meeting, I've carefully considered this item. The applicant has shown much attention to detail and thoughtfulness in regard to his neighbors and the community. He has been cognizant of the things that make up the character of Pleasant Ridge, preserving mature trees, protecting the neighbors' arbivideae, and attempting to work with the neighbors to come to a solution. If I were in his position, I would hope to do many of the same things and encourage an amicable outcome. That said, I see my obligation as one that has to weigh the impacts and potential future impacts to the community when making a decision. Oftentimes, there are trickle-down effects from a decision long afterward. Unintended consequences, excuse me, are tough to predict, and that's why situations as this are difficult to suss out properly. Ultimately, my decision on this item would be to deny the request. The issue in question is self-imposed, and while it isn't officially a variance request, it possesses the same variables, impacts, and significance as one, hence why it's in front of the commission for a vote. By granting the request, the street would be altered, and I cannot support that. The owners of the property have a path forward by selling a fully intact 61-foot lot by right, which is consistent with the character of their neighbors and does not require commission approval.
Was there any other discussion that we had?
No. I think we've, I think we've covered.
All right. I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
A yes vote is a vote to deny.
Fine.
Right.
A motion was to deny.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry, you're in the event.
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
The motion carries. So we're sorry that we weren't able to follow through, but I think there's a lot of concern about precedence and potentially allowing that in other places. Thank you, though.
Thank you for your work on this.
And we know whatever goes there will be beautiful, and your house is beautiful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Community Center generation, generator. I'm tongue-tied.
Okay, one of the, one of the main capital improvement efforts that the commission provided for in the current fiscal year budget was a backup generator for the community center. We've gotten quotes from three vetted electricians for this. The backup generator, so let me go back to the beginning, when the, when, before the pool was built, there was an existing community center building. And then when the pool was built, they basically built a new building that abuts the old building. So we functionally have two separate buildings there. There's two separate electrical panels, there's two gas meters. It's like a townhouse. They're two independent things that just kind of share a wall. So this complicated the, the process of getting quotes, because you either have to do a lot of interior electrical work to make everything work together, and it gets a lot more complex. Or you do a backup generator for each side of the building. So we pursued quotes for the north half of the building. That's the portion where you enter, and you have the office, and then you've got the two community rooms, the big room, the kitchen, and then the main bathrooms. They're down the hallway. So then, what would not be handled by the backup generator is the fitness center and the pool area. So we would not be able to power the pool during a power outage, but we would be able to use the kitchen and the building as a cooling center and a, basically a place for people to go.
Sure.
If they needed during an outage. We got three quotes. One of them quoted a 48-kilowatt generator. The other two quoted a 60-kilowatt generator. We did confirm with Oak Electric that they can supply a 60-kilowatt generator, but they did their load calculations, and they're confident that a 48-kilowatt generator would be sufficient to power the building. The low bid was Oak Electric Service at $42,658. Don's Electric, and Oak Electric was the 48-kilowatt generator. Don's Electric was the second low bid at $44,309. They quoted a 60-kilowatt generator. So in order to upsize the generator, Oak Electric has indicated that that would be $2,250 over their base bid. So that puts them slightly above the Don's Electric bid, but they're still right there. So our recommendation is to approve the bid by Oak Electric. And also, I'm requesting in your motion that we add 15% for contingencies, just because of everything right now.
Because.
Oak Electric has indicated that the lead time on generators is sometimes, sometimes has been eight months, sometimes 10 months right now. So we're just dealing in uncertain everything for getting equipment and supplies. So that's a request, just in case we run into any kind of unforeseen circumstances with this project. And also, you know, all of our old house, old building projects, you know how it is when you start to get into it.
It's like putting a sidewalk in at the, at the storage facility.
Right. One thing leads to another.
Yes.
So, you know, that's just, that's a request that I put in with a 15%. So we're happy to discuss that further, or any other detail about the proposals, all of which are included in your packet.
Yep. Thank you. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move the bid for the community center backup generator be awarded to Oak Electric of Waterford, Michigan in the total amount of $42,658 plus 15% for contingencies.
Any discussion?
I thank you for doing this. I think this will be an amazing benefit to the community, because, you know, trees and electricity. So thank you.
Yeah, we know that we've seen more storms lately, and, and, and the storms are the sort that just knock lines out of the, you know, off the poles, and we don't know if the outages will be hours or days. We know there's a lot of conversation with DTE right now on that topic, and until then, it makes sense for our community to have a place for residents to go in the event that their power goes out, and they need to charge up a phone, or get some work done, or, I don't know, cook lasagna, whatever.
Stay cool, stay warm. Cook lasagna.
So we have the space for it, and it's good to have the generator there so that that building is up and running in the event that we do lose power.
It's a great idea.
Well, it was a great benefit. There was some outage that was on the east side, and the west side wasn't out, and it's like, it was great because you guys opened up the community center for residents to go over and work. You know, it was through this whole COVID thing, and they were able to spread people out, and it was an enormous benefit. So if, for us to be able to really rely on that, like, if the whole city goes down and whatever, that'll be great. So thank you.
All right. Let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries. All right, let's talk about a public hearing.
Yes. Next on the agenda is scheduling a public hearing. There's, there has been a transfer of ownership for the Whistlestop. This happened in August, so if you haven't noticed anything over there, it's been, as I understand, a fairly seamless transition. The, the man who bought the, the business had been working there and has been keeping things going. Arben, are you here?
No, are you guys?
Okay, yeah. So yes, we have, and, and please, please help me with the pronunciation of your last name.
Yeah, it's not as hard as it looks. My name is Arben Grachewski.
Okay.
This is my brother, yes.
I am awesome, Grachewski. Nice to meet you guys.
We're excited that we are moving into Whistlestop, serving you guys.
I love Whistlestop. I've been going there quite a long time now. I'm just excited to get it rolling and going.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so the, we have to schedule a public hearing to transfer the liquor license from the previous owner to the current owner. So we would schedule the public hearing for November 15. We have a full application. We've done background checks, and we have no issues proceeding with going to the public hearing.
Thank you.
And I think I could answer, or Mr. Grachewski could answer any, any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for them?
No questions at this point.
I have a question about the skeleton in the corner as you walk by Whistlestop late at night.
Well, that was not me.
That's on, it's on the patio. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, that is something.
But besides that, I'm good.
All right. Well, why don't we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, November 15, 2022, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on an application to transfer an existing liquor license for the property commonly known as Whistlestop Cafe LLC.
Second.
I'm sorry, there's one important thing that I didn't specifically mention, but connected to our liquor licenses are operating agreements. And so the, the applicant is proposing to continue the operating agreement that the previous owner had been operating under unchanged. So that would keep the hours, the hours of operation the same, all of the business parameters that they've been operating under the same. So we shouldn't really expect to see any drastic changes in the business model over there.
Got it. Thank you.
I think continuity and certainty is a good thing.
Yeah, for sure. And we've had some conversations about parking and other things there, so.
Right.
Yeah.
There have been a lot of issues we've addressed over the years that are in the operating agreement now, so.
Exactly.
Comforting.
To what she, what he, Walter, been doing, so.
Cool.
So far, so good.
All right. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries. City managers report.
Yeah, I've got a few items tonight.
You do.
Some things happening. First, I can't, here we are, leaf pickup begins November 7. We alternate which side we start on each year, so this year, we're starting on the east side. Final pickup will begin the week of December 5. So you can bag leaves beforehand and put them out in compost bags for pickup, before curbside pickup begins the week of November 7. One thing that we're piloting is a reservation system for the fireplace over at Gainesboro. There's a deposit and proof of insurance that a homeowner or a resident would have to provide, and then they'd be responsible for the fire over there, but there's no rental fee, as long as everything is shipshape and tidy. At the end of the rental, you'll get your deposit check back. And it's just a way that we hope some residents can enjoy use of the fireplace, with somebody being on the hook for making sure that it's, that it's managed and maintained the right way, so.
One more question?
Is, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your flow. Do you want to wait till the end?
Uh, no, no, I, was it on the fireplace?
Yeah, it's on the fireplace.
Go ahead.
It's just like the conversation, conservationalist in me, but I'm wondering if there's a way to, like, the wood that's picked up and stored in the DPW, like, the big brush and that kind of stuff, to keep a trip to the landfill or wherever it goes. Is there any way to get that into the fireplace? As PR people are burning in that fireplace, that's, the footballs throwaway. Maybe that's too much to ask right now, but maybe that's something we can consider.
Yeah, well, we just poured a new DPW yard, so we don't have anything over there at the moment.
At the moment, but I'm sure as, you know, our trees drop giant limbs, and they pick them up, and.
Yeah, that's, the concern I have is it's not always, you know, sometimes it's a little green, and, you know, it's smoky and doesn't burn as well.
I'll get that.
Yeah.
I might take like a year. I'd, I'd burn natural wood, too, so.
Right, right, right. But, you know, with, with the, with the amount of turnover and brush we pick up, I, I'll have to look and see if there's, you know, and, you know, we often get it, it's not in, we'd have to cut it, because it's, it comes in big lengths.
For sure, for sure. If there's a convenient way of thinking, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The way we're handling it now is residents are responsible for bringing their own wood, because we're trying not to get in the business of being wood, wood providers.
I'm buying, I mean, can we get scale some out of their way? Okay, cool.
Right.
That's a great idea.
And we thought about it, but, you know, the idea of us buying the wood and then managing it and stacking it and maintaining it and storing it, we just don't really have the staff to, to dedicate the time it takes for that.
Okay. So B-I-O-W.
Yeah. We are pursuing Dog Park Lighting quotes or ideas. We've, we've talked to a couple places, so we are working on that. Nothing to report yet. We're also looking at tennis court lights. You may have noticed that two of the tennis court lights are out. They basically exploded, so they're end of life. So we've gotten, we've gotten one quote. It came in for doing retrofitting to LED lights there, instead of the old metal halide style, and it was $60,000 to replace eight lights on the post. So after we kind of.
Thank you, 2022.
Yeah. After we said, okay, then, back to the drawing board. So replacing all eight lights with new metal halide lights is still $20,000 from the, from what we've gotten. So I don't know what we're doing with those yet. We're working on it. But if you've noticed that some of the lights at the tennis court are out, we know, and we're working on it.
Thanks.
You may have seen that the Ferndale Woodward Project is starting in October for some Phase 1 work. This is, this is really primarily an MDOT road resurfacing project. We partnered with Ferndale for a road diet. The road diet is primarily in Ferndale. Very little of that is happening in Pleasant Ridge with this cooperative project. But this year, they'll be doing some curb work, some joint ceiling, just some prep work. Next year, they'll be resurfacing all of Woodward from Oak Ridge to Eight Mile, and then implementing the road diet through Ferndale. If you want more information on that, Ferndale is pushing out information at ferndalmoves.com. And as we, our part of the project begins next year, we'll share out information as well. But for now, you may see some lane closures that begin in Pleasant Ridge, but it's MDOT doing their work in Ferndale. So related to that is our cycle track project. This is on the east, east side of Woodward, on the northbound side, from Sylvan to Main Street. We have prepared the revised designs. Those are into MDOT for approval. You'll recall, this is where SEMCOG provided a, a lot more additional TAP funding to make that project go. So we're in, we're in the review and approval process. Our intent is to get that bid out still this fall before the end of the year, and then to also work on that project next year. And one thing residents should be aware of is, you know, we're all getting ready for I-75 to be done, just in time for I-696 to be under construction for the next four to five years. So next year, they're starting 275 to Evergreen. That'll be about a two-year project, and then there, after that is Evergreen to Dequinder. So here we go again.
Yeah.
And finally, the last project I'll update is the Kensington Water Main. That's the project that we won federal earmark funding for, which has put us in a state of permanent limbo, because the feds don't just say, okay, you're.
And here's the money.
They don't just cut you a check. EPA had to come up with a grant process to award grants to people who have already won the grants, but we still have to go through the grant process, and they haven't released the grant application or guidance yet. So I've had three or four meetings with EPA pre-grant application development meetings. So we're continuing to work on that. If you're wondering why we've been talking about the Kensington Water Main for, feels like, five years now.
Almost as long as we've been talking about the then and now.
Almost, yeah. Be the first chapter in the new, then and now, volume three, right? So hopefully, they release that soon, and we can get this project out. It's designed, we're, we're just waiting for the funding to come through. So it's a good thing we got $650,000, but we're now on federal government time. So stay patient. We're, as soon as we can, we'll get that project going. So we still hope to, to get that done next year. Still the goal. So it's a good thing we got $650,000, but we're now on federal government time. So stay patient. As soon as we can, we'll get that project going. So we still hope to, to get that done next year. Still the goal.
Great.
Cool.
And does anyone else have any questions about anything happening?
I thought there was a question in Katie's.
No, 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 no. I mean, I have, so, no, I'm good, thank you.
What is the, the sidewalk project that's going up to the barn?
A new door.
DPW barn? Or you own a, just trying to get.
Well, so, you know, the resale shop is in the pole barn building.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of a, it made sense why that went there when it did. But the resale shop started when we hadn't brought any DPW functions back in-house. So the pole barn was really just sort of stuffed with old forgotten things. Well, then we hired Tim, and we've started to build our own capacity to do some things for DPW, so we bought a street sweeper, we have more, we have trailers or utility things, we have more vehicles, so we need the pole barn for actual DPW storage now. But the problem is, when you're in the yard, the overhead door that you use to pull trailers in, the back end, to pull the street sweeper in, is right next to where the resale shop is.
Yeah.
And so as you're trying to function, as you're trying to back a trailer in and maneuver, you can't because you're running into all the resale shop. So we've met with the resale shop, and we are going to move them to the north side of the building because then the, so I guess the best way I could illustrate it is, if this is the DPW building, the door is here at the yard. This is where the yard is. This is where the current resale shop entrance is.
Yeah.
We'll move the resale shop to this part. The door that's being built and added is here, which will go to the Gainesboro pathway. That's how you'll get into the resale shop. And then we'll be able to use this space to back in and maneuver.
Great.
To get all the vehicles and everything else we need to get in and out of the building. Our goal is, you know, we don't want to leave our trailers and our, our street sweeper out in the elements.
Yeah. That sounds like a great solution.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we're working on that, too.
And that door entry will be really nice, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The walkway, that's fun.
Right.
Just be a pathway to a wall, which is what it looks like now.
Yeah, it was interesting.
And if you're wondering why all the pathway lights are out in Gainesboro Park, it's because, you know, the electrical lines got cut when that was happening.
That's my earlier comment.
Oh, fun.
So we're working on that, too.
Cool.
Yeah.
Not all the dog pee.
It wasn't that.
Right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Any other business?
Mayor?
Yes.
So the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club is going to be holding trivia night on Friday, November 11, up at the community center. The teams, the tables are, you can have a table of eight for a team, and then they also have, and it's a really fun event. It is, you bring your own, BYOB, bring your own snacks, and it also is a great fundraiser. It raises money for scholarships for kids within the Ferndale area school district. So it doesn't matter where your kid goes to school, but if they live within this district, when they're seniors, they can be eligible for a scholarship. And, yeah, they're excited, the Women's Club is excited to sort of ramp up their whole trivia program, so hopefully once a month, they'll be offering it through the fall and winter and may, early spring. So if you want to, yeah, reach out to me at, what is my email address?
A. Perry.
A. Perry@cityofpleasantridge.org, and we'll figure it out. Or reach out to me on Facebook, and we'll figure out how to get you signed up. Or if you know anybody in the Women's Club, they can hook you up. It'll, but it's a lot of fun, and it's a great trivia group that's right here from Pleasant Ridge, too. So it's fun. That's all I have.
I'm excited.
No problem. Thank you. Anything else from anyone? I guess we're ready to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're like an hour.
I'll pay, I'll make some coffee.
Election time.
That's right, it is election time.
So there'll be election November 8. Due to the election, the city commission meeting, and you made a motion to schedule a public hearing, it's a week later. So the city commission meeting is November 15 instead of November 8. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 8, and the election, the voting conference will be at Community Center. Last day to register to vote, normal registration would be October 24, but you can register to vote up to and including Election Day. You just need to come into my office and do that. There's an additional stuff that you need to do for that. The offices are open for absentee ballots. We're issuing them now. We have, I want to say almost 700 out.
Wow.
Right now.
It was something like 400 last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So with, you know, a lot of people signed up for the permanent absentee list, and a lot more people are voting absentee, which is great. We will be open and issuing absentee ballots the Saturday before the election, so that's November 5. We're here from 8 to 4, so you can come in and get a ballot that day. All ballots absentee need to be returned by 8:00 PM on Election Day. You have until 8:00 PM, and you return them here. So I'll be here in the office.
Okay.
To take those, drop in the drop box, I'll grab it, and then they'll be taken over to the precinct for processing. Oh, we have, this year, the legal voters did drop off paper voter guides, so we do have them if you wanted in print, if it's easier to read in print for you. They're here and at the community center, but you can always go onto the League's website, which, I don't know what I have right now, but you can go onto the League's website, and they have an electronic copy there, too.
I can tell you the website.
Okay.
It's LWVOA.org.